Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order, this being the regular, um, meeting for the National Town Council, today being Tuesday, October 3rd, and for the record, the time is seven We have, uh, three items of minutes to approve, April 20th, which is one of our budget sessions, uh, September 5th and September 27th. Does the Chair here motion they be approved as written, or are there corrections, and is there correction?
Move that we approve the minutes.
I'll say. Uh, I have one question, if I can find it. It's on page, page 13th. This is probably, I'm sorry, page 14th. About halfway down the page there, we're talking about the poundage of recycling. Are you with me there, Lou?
Yes.
Okay. Where it says thirty percent of the population, was that word "population" or "poundage"?
You said "population."
"Population." Okay, I, I, I think I meant "poundage," and probably could've come out the same way. But it's still the same thing, "population" or "poundage," the numbers are the same. Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, has been a motion, was there a second?
It was.
Did the minutes be approved?
It was.
There was? Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor of approving the minutes, indicate, so we'll say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? The minutes are approved. We've had no requests with citizens comments tonight, so we move to our full agenda, which is a little, little lengthier than we have. The first item is the discussion of Virginia Avenue traffic, which is going to take some time, and with the permission of the council, I'd like to move over that and do some of these things, we get through quickly, come back for the discussion session, because some people may want to leave. Uh, so we move to item B, which is consideration of the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen municipal service district projects. And in your, uh, package, you will see, the municipal service district has met and recommended, uh, three projects for the year, uh, the Battleship Beautification Project and Christmas Decorations and Banners in Brackets Downtown, uh, which looks like a pretty okay deal, because, because I get Christmas decoration complaints all the time. Uh, does the Chair here motion we approve these, uh, projects?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, there's a second. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Rapper, it, the, uh, the money that we've got set aside for them, for that, well not for them, that they have contributed to that line item.
Yes, sir.
Will it, since there's no estimated cost on any of this stuff, do we anticipate that what we've got for this year, that will cover what they want to get done now?
Yes, what was proposed is anticipated to fit within the budget that we have.
Okay.
No exact dollar figures were presented, because we expect by the time these things are ordered, there'll be some fluctuation in the prices.
Right.
But, but we're, we're certain that what we wanted to order will fit within the budget.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay. Is there other discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, the projects are approved, okay? And I'd like to thank all the people who engaged in the municipal service districts, with all their advisories and the boards and things, for what they've done for us. Okay, item number C is consideration of conforming changes to interlocal agreements, of which there are three. Uh, one for, this is, you know, in association with the League Interlocal Risk Financing Fund and the NC Interlocal Risk Management Agency and the Municipal Insurance Trust of North Carolina, and there are three separate resolutions, and they're indicating that we will go with the changes, and the changes are essentially word changes, uh, and it's a lot, a lot of words, too. Uh, Lou, do you have any comments on that, since you, you requested us to approve this as part of your human services stuff?
Sure, we currently have interlocal agreements for each of these funds with the League of Municipalities. Their Board of Directors met earlier this summer and agreed to change the number of board members, and then just a zip code on one thing, and, um, just some other minor details. And this is just to conform the language with other agreements that they have, and this is just for us to add this to our current interlocal agreements.
So it's mostly administrative?
Just cleaning up language.
Yes, yes, just, just language, as the same in all the three documents.
It was real good reading, Lou, I tell you.
Yeah, it was good reading. Okay, is there other comments? The Chair here motion we approve the, uh, the consideration?
So may.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the, uh, agreements. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, it is approved. Okay, item D is consideration of ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Nashville at twenty ninety Eastern Avenue. This is the property that we've had a public hearing on, and, uh, other issues going on for about the last month, which is the piece of property, uh, just adjacent to, uh, Regency Estates on, on, uh, Washington Street. Does the Chair here motion we approve the consideration?
So may.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we approve the consideration. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, they are. Mr. Manager, you'll notify them, is there now taxpayers?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, item E is consideration of ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Nashville at twenty-one, twenty-two Eastern Avenue, which is right across the driveway into Regency Estates from the same place. Does the Chair here motion we approve this consideration?
So may.
It's been moved and... Second? Got two motions and no second?
A second.
Okay, now we've got a second. Okay, is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, there are now taxpayers. Okay, item F is consideration of a resolution for the town of Nashville's update to the plan of further fair housing, um, community development block grant program. This is the annual renewal that we have to have, uh, to guarantee that we're doing stuff according to the law with the community development block grant program, part of which is our CFP money that we're working now. Uh, does the Chair here motion we approve this?
So may.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, if there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, it is done. Okay, thank you very much for your indulgence. Let's go back to item number one, the Virginia Avenue situation. Uh, if you will look on page, let me find it here, your blue, under the yellow, is the blue tab. Behind the blue tab, you'll see, uh, Virginia Avenue. For the longest kind of time, we have been parking cars, uh, four lanes wide there for a few minutes in the afternoon to pick up kids from the elementary school, and everybody seems to be going, going, been no problems up to this point, but there's been some discussion from one of the property owners there about us blocking traffic. And I asked, um, our manager if he would consider his, get his planning staff together, to work together, I'm saying to give us some ideas of what we could possibly do with it, and, uh, I'd like to ask them to tell us what they've found and see what we can possibly do to resolve this problem.
Uh, yes, sir, um...
You move that a little closer to you, please.
Yes, sir, is it better?
Thanks, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you are correct, we have been getting a few concerns about the traffic on Virginia Avenue, and so diving into it, we're on the surface of trying to figure out what we're currently doing, and then what we need to do long-term. Um, I've asked Officer Corbett to come tonight to try to give you some background on what we used to do compared to what we do now, and then also, he can also give you some times and how long it takes to move traffic, and in, in the case of emergency, what they would do. So I'd like to start with that, and then when he's through, I'd like to give you, uh, three or four recommendations that I'd like to study, but I'm probably gonna need a month to get together with the police department, the school, and other emergency services before I give you anything to really consider.
Okay, good, I think that's a good plan. Got a consultant at school, people.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Corbett, would you come forward and state your name and address and position for the record, please?
Yes, sir, Joseph Corbett, uh, seventeen oh eight East Old Springhoop Road.
So, you're gonna give a report on what we currently...
In a nutshell, um, everybody, most everybody's familiar with the school traffic across the county being an, an issue, and it's, and it seems to get a little worse every year for every school, whether it's middle school, elementary school, uh, even some of the high schools. Unfortunately, when, at the time that this school, the elementary school was built, there wasn't a lot of compensation made for school pickup, taking, it wasn't taking into consideration how many parents would be picking up your kids after school, and dropping them off before school. So for several years, the police department has taken it upon, amongst ourselves to, to alleviate some of that traffic congestion. Um, unfortunately, there are two major thoroughfares, there's First Street, and there's Austin Street that the school sits in between. The, the way the school is configured, and the drop-off points and the pickup points, First Street is affected by, on the Green Street side of the school, Austin Street is unfortunately affected because of the Virginia Street side of the school. They're both two pickup points depending on the grade level. Uh, one pack of those kids pick up on, on the backside of the school, another grade, another few grade levels pick up on the Virginia Street side. The Green Street side of the school, the back part of the school, is typically not an issue, um, until we're dumping, until we dumped that, that pickup traffic onto Austin Street. And just to give you guys a frame of reference, there's roughly eighty, anywhere from eighty to a hundred cars every afternoon that pick up their children from school, just, just on Virginia Street. There's, there's somewhere between sixty and eighty cars that do the exact same thing on the backside of the school. So we very much have a, a traffic congestion problem. Um, the only thing the police department could do was take, again, taking them upon ourselves to try to alleviate the traffic. So what we did for the Virginia Street side, what's being questioned now, is we, we packed, we took that roadway because it's so wide, and we made lanes, so we could stack more cars up. Unfortunately, there, there are parents that come as early as an hour before the, the bell rings, and they park on Virginia Street to pick their kids up. Um, there's nothing we can do to deter that. The unfortunate problem is when they get to Virginia Street, if they don't have anywhere to go, they back up Austin Street, and with that many cars, with, with eighty to a hundred cars, it doesn't take long for those cars to literally be staged as far back as Cross Street. So the only thing we could do to avoid traffic congestion on Austin Street was to pack them up on Virginia. Uh, we did that for a couple, three years, relatively no issues. Uh, we took into consideration that there were some, some elderly people living in the, a couple of houses on Virginia Street where the, the roadways can be blocked at times, but we set up with our communication center, any emergency calls that go to those two residences at any given time, from three o'clock until four-thirty, they make us aware, at the same time they dispatch, firing EMS, they're dispatching us. And we are there, we're there every afternoon without fail. And we've had one call, one emergency call where EMS was called to one residence, they let us know, and as soon as that one call was dispatched to us, we cleared out a lane, allowing the, the ambulance to drive up and make quick access to the house. Um, and, and again, that has served us well for the last three years, yes, sir.
How long did it take you to clear that lane?
Best guess, thirty seconds at the most. Um, yes, sir, it doesn't take, by the time the, by the time EMS staff can get on their unit and get to us, or just to leave their station, the lane's already cleared. Um, it doesn't take long at all, excuse me. What we had to do this year, we had to make some adjustments. Uh, the, the children, they've got a new location inside the school for the, the students and the staff's safety, where they, they dispatch them out a little differently. So what we did, we took advantage of it, again, trying to get ahead of the game. Um, it would take us roughly forty-five or fifty minutes to clean Virginia Street off from start to finish, in, in the past. This year, we're down to about fifteen minutes, that's our average time so far, and we're still fine tuning. But what we do is when we get there, instead of us just sitting and directing traffic, we're taking advantage of that time, and we're going from car to car, more or less making a list in order of the children, who's here to pick up who. We take that list inside the school, where the kids are gagged up when the bell rings, and we're calling those names out and staging those kids in order. So we're way ahead of the curve on, as far as trying to expedite that process, and again, we're down to about fifteen minutes as our average. Um, on a really good day, we're ten, eleven minutes, but our average is fifteen. That's, that's where we're at, yes, ma'am?
So you clear out Virginia Avenue in fifteen minutes?
From the time the bell rings to the time the last kid walks out of the school, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the bell rings at?
Three fifteen.
Okay, so...
About three-thirty, we're gone.
Lieutenant, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I've, I've tried to go by there, and, and, and I guess because I'm not school oriented anymore, being the age I am, to having kids.
Yes, sir.
I miss it every day, but, uh, from my recollection, I didn't, we're using all four lanes of Virginia Street, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And if rescue is called to come there, you can clear it out in a matter of, before the units will get there?
Most definitely.
You can clear that one lane, at least that one lane out.
Before they, before they ever leave the bay with that ambulance, yes, sir.
My only prob, my only question, not problem, my only question with that, you're clearing it out for emergency vehicles, but how do you know that a citizen is coming home or trying to leave home, because dispatch is not aware of that?
Yeah.
And how much of an impact on Austin Street would you have if we kept one lane open continuously?
They would still, unfortunately, that one lane is, is roughly twenty cars, um, when it, when it's stacked up. Twenty cars pushed back would take us back to the community building, that driveway that exits out, and that, that is where the bottleneck is, the kids being picked up on the backside of the school, that's their exit point.
That's their exit point.
Yes, sir, so once they, once the driver gets to that exit point and needs to make a left-hand or a right-hand turn, there's traffic in his way, his or her way, so they can't, they can't safely see what it is they're trying to do.
Have you, have you, picking up on what Mr. Taylor just said, have you have any, have your officers had any questions, anybody wanted to come home during that time and had to make way for?
No, no, sir, as, as luck would have it, we, we've been fortunate in that there are only two driveways that have been, that have been impacted, at least on the Virginia Street side, and the, the people that live there, they, they kinda got into a routine of, if I'm gonna leave, I need to be gone by three o'clock, if I'm gonna come home, I know I need to get there before three o'clock, because they know that, that small window, what used to not be a small window, it was about forty-five, fifty minutes before.
Yeah, and the window of disturbance says only fifteen minutes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, in, in reality, yes, sir, it's about a fifteen-minute window that, that they could be negatively impacted.
And, and that's for the entire street?
No, well, no, sir, from, from Collins Street to Austin Street, there's a very small section, we're not using all of Virginia Street, we're using a very small section.
I know what you're using, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all four lanes you're using?
Yes, sir.
As you, as you load the cars from the front of the line, the lanes start moving over?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so the fourth lane over there is only closed for a few minutes?
Yes, sir, prior, prior to this, prior to us actually staging the kids ahead of time, we would actually fill up all four lanes. When the first lane would empty, the fourth lane would still be full, and we would fill the first lane up again.
Okay.
So essentially, we were five, roughly five and a half lanes by the time it was all said and done, so we were constantly having to manage and move that traffic.
Okay, okay, so that's, uh, that's what I thought I heard the first time. Okay, anybody got any questions? Comments?
We block off the US mail.
We do what with the US mail?
Blocking the mail.
Block it off, because I know, I live on Austin Street.
Yeah.
And when I, they have all four lanes shut, that's the time the US mail comes from Nashville, and they block it off, and then, and we can get our mail later.
I hadn't thought about them, but this...
Did you know that? Did you go there?
She asking me? No, ma'am, I haven't, I haven't seen any impacts for the, the postal service.
Well, I have, because I live on Austin Street, and it's getting later and later.
Is your mailbox on Austin Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, yeah, we don't have any...
I have Austin Community.
Yeah, we don't have any traffic staged on Austin Street, so...
But yet, you, they leave Austin, the US mail leaves Austin Street, they're supposed to go up Virginia Avenue, and they cannot go up Virginia Avenue because you have it blocked off, and our mail gets later and later every day.
First I've heard about that.
Yeah, whether or not that's true, Mayor, I have no idea.
I don't know, maybe we need to consult with the post office and find out what that route is, because, because I know the post office, people come by my house, they come at all different kinds of times.
Yes, sir.
And that's why they said something to the postmaster about it, and they haven't done so.
Okay, okay, well, we don't control the post office. Okay, okay, thanks, Joey.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Hason?
Yeah, just to conclude on that, Officer Corbett gave a, a great presentation on what we're really doing now, and some of the constraints that he has to work with. So I came up with three or four, um, options that we could do, and none of these have been studied, so I don't want to pretend that any of them will be the final option. One option, anything you do in life, is to do nothing. Um, obviously, doing nothing, in my opinion, does not accurately reflect our ordinances, the ordinance that you're attached does not truly show the area that we're blocking off. Um, number two would be to open up, um, a lane of traffic, which is what, um, Mr. Taylor said, but then again, we've got some other kinds that could come along with that, where it could back up onto, and what that impacts. Um, another one is to move the kids to a different pickup, um, location. Of course, we're working with the school system, and, um, they probably picked that particular pickup point for a reason, but they will be consulted on this. Um, another option is to continue doing a version of what we're doing, but cleaning it up and making it more reflective in our ordinances of what we truly do. Um, I'm glad Ms. Rabel made her comments, because, um, not only we're gonna contact with the PD and the school and the other services, but we definitely will make contact with the postal services as well, and make sure that everybody's on the same page. And, um, I'd like to get a month to look at this and see if I can get you something worth considering next month.
Yeah, okay, I seem to like your last suggestion, if you can work and clean up the ordinances, and I was completely unaware of this post office thing. Okay, is everybody satisfied to do that? We've got a month to work with, come back to our next meeting, we'll bring to us, okay?
Did everyone get the email from David Ensco concerning the sale of property?
Yeah.
When it interferes with someone being able to sell two properties, then we do have a problem.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to David about that, and, uh, I told him we were working on these, he didn't want to hear what we're gonna do. So, anyway, this is, like, like, like Joey said, this has been a problem for a long time, because we were once on, on the First Street, and on Austin Street, and on Green Street, wherever, wherever, but this seems to work better than anything we've done so far. Okay, moving along, we're now down to item G, uh, consideration of a resolution of payments for invoices, which is under the, it's a purple tab. Uh, this is a situation like we've had before, where we got these two outstanding things that the, the council needs to work on, because they came, came in out of the budget system, uh, has the same, same thing, same resolution, deal with pre-audit, so now therefore, Bill O'Dane, on behalf of the Mayor, the Town Council, through this resolution, the Town of Nashville Council hereby approve the following invoices for payment, uh, two to strictly equipment, and one to Nashville Building's block, a total of twenty-eight dollars and two cents. Uh, and that will go into, to the town records as a resolution that we, we, the council, have entered into the budgetary process of approving, approving requisitions. Uh, the Chair here motion we approve the resolution?
So may.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mayor, since we, since we started doing this in the middle of last year, or may have been, may have been earlier than that, I was under the impression that eventually this would kinda go away.
Yeah.
But it has not, it's gotten, it's gotten smaller.
Yeah, I understand.
And I do understand that, well, the department has an emergency, an emerg, a true emergency is a true emergency, you need to, you need to take, do what you need to do to keep them, keep the ball rolling, but, uh, I have a, I have a concern about how a piece of plexiglass is, is an emergency and couldn't wait to be approved. Uh, what was that plexiglass floor?
The, the issue here was not that it was an emergency, the issue here was that the process was circumvented to make the purchase in the first place. Um, the fire department is one of the departments that's giving what we call a green sheet.
Okay.
Which gives that department the authority to, uh, make an expenditure within certain limits.
Right.
Uh, without going through the purchase requisition process that I have to sign off on, and that's meant to expedite the process for small purchases, but also comply with our internal control requirements that the order puts on us. Um, the green sheet's distributed by the finance director to each of the applicable departments on the day board. The, they're supposed to record on the green sheet what the purchase is and the amount it's gonna cost before the purchase is made. Both of these purchases were made, not only not put on the green sheet, the green sheet was never obtained.
We need to fix that.
I agree.
Okay, alright, that's my, that's my concern.
Okay, okay, all that said and done, then, let's approve the resolution, then we'll talk some more. All in favor, indicate, so we're saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, the resolution is, is approved. Uh, now going back to this issue, we need to, need to solve this problem. I too thought it would eventually go away with just holdover stuff in the budget year, but it appears it's an ongoing thing, and I'd like to suggest that we get together and work out a method with the business office and the manager and department heads, whoever else gets involved, to eliminate this thing, what, whatever it takes, and I'm not sure what the picture is, but all of us together can come up with a solution of some sort. Uh, and, and we need a work session on that, also to include a couple of other things, on the project you're working on with the budget.
Right.
And some, some projections we've got coming along.
Right.
Would that fit people's budget, uh, calendar sometime next couple of weeks? I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we'd be there for ninety minutes.
I'd make it fit.
What?
I'd make it fit.
Make you fit?
Kinda make it fit my calendar.
Mayor, can I, can I propose the seventeenth, eighteenth, or nineteenth of October, if that fits anybody's schedule, that's a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday?
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, which one do you want?
I mean, all, all those would fit the, the applicable staff's schedule, with whatever is accommodated for council.
Amazingly, they'll all fit mine if we work on the seventeenth in the morning, the other two days are okay.
Seventeenth, where's yours?
Nineteenth, I have a meeting in Wilson.
What about seventeenth?
Seventeenth, I'm, I'm clear.
Seventeenth's good for me.
Seventeenth, yeah. Something okay for you?
Yeah.
Okay, if the seventeenth is good, then, let's determine, let's get a time. Uh, I would need to work in the morning, because we start like, could we get it done by, start at nine and, or ten? We should be through in a couple of hours, so...
I'd hope so.
Okay, alright. Alright.
And...
What, what do we agree on, nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
And, and the other issues the Mayor was referring to, Ms. Hinton has inquired at, at a previous meeting about the GFOA budget award, and it's something that I've referenced in some materials to y'all, but I, it'd be good for me to go over with y'all in some detail about what all is entailed in that process, and I think that would help, although we're very early, we're always gotta be planning on the next year's budget, so I think this will help kickstart that process, so, um, we're already having those discussions before our retreat, um, even comes up first of the year.
Yeah, okay, alright, that'd be good, now, now, where? A meeting in the boardroom? Uptown?
Uh, question.
Yes.
When we have this meeting, do you think it'd be a good idea for our appropriate department heads to be present, since this is gonna affect them?
Well, that's up to him.
I'd like one to be there.
He supervises people, okay?
I know.
Okay, you want there, that's fine.
I'd like one to be there, yeah.
I have no problem with that at all. Okay, hold on.
Alright, once again, Tuesday, the seventeenth, nine o'clock, Town Hall.
Town Hall, yes, ma'am. Let's see, okay, and number H is, again, it's a budget amendment, but this is receiving funds and adding to our drug fund, uh, please just stick together, uh, we received, uh, fifty-seven-hundred-and-ten dollars for our Hope Initiative, which goes into our, our drug prevention line item, increased it by twenty-six, by fifty-seven-hundred-and-ten Increased it by twenty, by fifty-seven hundred and ten dollars. So it's now thirty-four, uh, two twenty-seven instead of twenty-nine oh seventeen. So, does the chair motion to approve this amendment?
Sir, may.
It's been moved and.
Ten seconds.
Secondly, we approve it. It's in discussion. If there being none, all in favor, indicate, so we say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Suppose no. Okay, okay, the next one, okay, now we've got a manager's report. Okay, Mr. H, Mr. White?
Thank you, mayor. Um, the budget amendment that's already been assigned, um, number ten was for four hundred and ten dollars. Four hundred and ten dollars was taken away from materials and supplies in the police department and added to capital outlay equipment. That was to cover the cost of two new police cars. Uh, we ran into this issue last year and also had to do a budget amendment where we're having to againstimate what the, um, state contract's gonna be for police cars. And we've come just a, a few hundred dollars short in the last couple of years in predicting what that was gonna be. So the police, uh, department absorbed that hit, uh, so we could get those cars.
Is that strictly for the cars and not the equipment or?
That's right. That's just the cars. Um, in our public utilities department, the sewer camera, uh, that we budgeted, uh, for this current year has been received. And we're planning on having training for the staff next Thursday. Now, I can anticipate how long it's gonna take to acclimate the staff to learning a new, um, piece of equipment that we haven't had before. But I do anticipate in the next few weeks being able to schedule an event that, um, the council's welcome to come to if the media would like to learn about how that, uh, camera's being used. But I'd like for there to be a little bit of time for the staff to learn how to use it before it's showcased. Um, we've also hired the, um, custodian position for the public works department. We've hired Ms. Gail Edwards and she has begun her role in this position and so far has done an excellent job in the cleaning of our facilities for the town.
You heard my compliment. She has really cleaned up some places that needed some work.
In our, in our library, the state aid application, uh, has been submitted and is under review by the state librarians. Uh, the library advisory board had a meeting, uh, and the meeting, a motion was passed to remove board members who missed three consecutive meetings. I, I know attendance in the past has been an issue for that advisory board. Uh, the library is also actively working on creating performance measures for the accurate record of performance in that department. Uh, Mr. Hassel reports in the planning department that the sewer project is well underway and is between First Street and Wumble Road. The goal was to make it to Wumble Road within the next two weeks and then board both First Street and Wumble Roads at the same time. A ribbon cutting ceremony was held on the twenty-fifth of September for the charging station. And to date, it has been used eleven times totaling, totaling fifty-four kilowatt hours. Um, and Golden Leaf, we're expecting to make a determination on our Elm Street Storm Drainage Project in early October. We, we are expecting that to actually be tomorrow, when, when a decision will be made on that. In our Parks and Rec Department, um, they've had several events. They had a movie showing for Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles and a karate class with forty-five in attendance. We had a hundred and fifty in attendance for the Bantam Rooster Concert. And, um, they had a Moana Movie Night in Luau where we had two hundred and fifty in attendance. So we're seeing an uptick in some of our, uh, Parks and Rec programming now that kids are back in school. Um, soccer began on the ninth of September. Uh, we have a total of a hundred and twenty players this year, uh, spanning twelve, let's see, four three-year-old teams, six five-and-under teams, four eight-and-under teams, and two twelve-and-under teams. We've also opened registration for an adult kickball program on October the ninth with, with play running from October the seventeenth through November the sixteenth. Parks and Rec has also released a, a needs assessment through social media and is working on a paper copy for games. This will assist in the development of a new, um, master plan for the Parks and Rec Department. The four thousand dollar grassroots arts grant has also been applied for. This was the funding that we received this past year for our concert series. And the human resources department conducted a wellness survey and, uh, got some valuable information that will help go into the use of the, um, wellness funds for this year. And in our, finally, in our police department, uh, there was a meeting with residents from Sunnyfield. We had the hometown heroes race on the sixteenth of September. There was a fundraiser again for the second annual one at West Ridge Grill to support the Hope Initiative from six PM to eleven PM. And thirty-seven hundred dollars was raised. Uh, there was also the second annual recovery rally at Glover Park on the twenty-third with over two hundred and fifty in attendance with eleven hundred dollars raised, so forty-eight hundred between the two programs. Uh, the chief went to a Hope Initiative presentation to, at Rockingham County Task Force and presented to their commissioners on the twenty-ninth of September. Our police officers will also be wearing pink patches on their uniform in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout the month of October, if you see them out wearing that. And we'll also be having our night out against crime at Glover Park from five PM to eight PM. Uh, the chief had mentioned previously that we weren't following the traditional night out against crime. Well, now, we've, we've, we've set a date. It's October the sixteenth. That concludes my report, mayor.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, now we're down to our comments section. Before we move on to that, I got a couple of updates. I was gonna mention the CFI update project, uh, but Hank's already got to that. But I went out there today and watched them work and they were, they are plowing through the woods and they're taking advantage of the good weather and low water. They're trying to dodge any kind of rain coming up. When the boring crew gets in, I think they're gonna have everything done, ready, just hook it all together. In case you haven't noticed, our very long-awaited lights on, on the sixty-four interchange, down at McDonald's, are being put in now. They're trenching up the, the underground, put up with the wiring. So, and that got submerged into a much larger project, so that's what slowed that down, but that's coming online. And unfortunately, our cross-street thing is still tied up in the right-of-way department over in Wilson. Seems like everything we try to do does not move it, but we're, uh, pressed on everybody from everywhere. But we're still, we're not gonna keep the faith. I'd like to thank everybody for coming and, uh, hope you have a nice week. Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Uh, once, uh, like you just said, mayor, I thank everybody for coming. Uh, it's good when you look out into the, uh, audience and you see people sitting out there that's not on the national staff. So, uh, spread the word around, get somebody to come with you next time. Cause it's always best to get the news firsthand. Other than that, no comments.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Taylor?
No comments, not, ma'am.
Ms. Hinton?
I'd like to congratulate Ms. Bishop on sixteen soccer teams. Bet it was hard finding the coaches for all of this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I was wondering about the, uh, Elm Street Storm Order. So the grant, we should hear from the grant?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
We are anticipating, um, Golden Leaf having a meeting and making a decision. That's what we're being told tomorrow. Now, how long it takes for that decision to be communicated to us, I don't know. Hopefully, it'd be that day or, or sometime this week, but we haven't been told a specific date we'd be notified. But we were told that's when they would be meeting to make a decision.
Saying on that, on that same topic.
Excuse me for interrupting you. I'm not sure how Golden Leaf is structured. Can they make the decision here locally and spend the money? Does it gotta go up to headquarters or someplace?
My, my, my understanding is that money was distributed by the state to Golden Leaf to make those decisions.
They can make them on, the decision tomorrow will be the decision.
That's right.
Okay, good. Okay, I'm sorry.
Our earlier conversation today, did you, uh, did, was anybody able to provide you with a percentage or estimate or whatever?
I have an update. That's what we spoke of earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if they want upfront money, we've already got forty-five hundred dollars in it. Possibly more if you're there to pain and suffering.
You're right.
I'm sorry, I was commenting.
Um, my understanding about the cross-street is that Ronnie Keeter, the new, um, division four engineer, is gonna walk that through for us, the, uh, right-of-way.
Super. When does he start walking?
I hope soon.
Okay. Well, all that said and done, you know, fall is in the air and we're headed into the holiday season. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I have to go out and find me a turkey somewhere. Okay, does the chair motion we adjourn?
Sir, may.
Second.
It's been moved and secondly, we adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Everybody else can stay here.